Good evening. Welcome to O'Conne County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December the 3rd, 2024. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Commissioner Jackson to lead us in the pledge. So please stand. First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second, motion second, all in favor. Thank you. Motion carries. Next time is statements and remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on tonight's agenda. Any statements or remarks from commissioners? This will be our last meeting of 2024. So no meeting in the last week of December. Next time is approval of minutes. This is from November 5th, 2024 and November 26th.
Make a motion to approve the November 5th and 26th meetings as submitted.
Motion second, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Our next time is presentation of the FY24 Audit Report by Rushton. If you want to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you commissioners for having Rushton back to do your 2024 audit. So I think you all have bound reports and then I've got some, some slides here to go through as far as numbers are concerned to, to keep you from having to dive too deep into this. And I'm glad we have such a great crowd here to hear such riveting information here tonight. So before I get started on the presentation, I first want to, as I mentioned, thank you all, but also thank the team at O'Conne County. We, we ask a lot of questions. We request a lot of documentation. We bother them a lot, your team. And so, and that really goes across the board. Obviously, we, we bother the finance group a lot more than, than the others, but we do, you know, visit most all of your offices and, and ask, ask a lot of, a lot of them. And they all do it, do it quickly and do it with a smile. So we, we appreciate that. The fact that we're here, this, this audit's been complete probably for a month now. And so as far as timing is concerned, very efficient getting, getting the audit done. So a great, great team you have on, onsite here and we're appreciative of that for the audit process. I want to first say that before we get into the numbers. All right. Oh, there we go. So looking at, in, in this annual financial report, if you, if you turn to pages one through three, you will find our independent auditors report. And so then independent audit report, of course, the, the objective of that report, of course, that is a product of us as your auditor, is to express an opinion. So as you'll see, our responsibilities are to express an opinion on these financial statements. So these financial statements, as we mentioned there, are the responsibility of the county's management. And our responsibility as your independent auditor is to express an opinion on those financial statements. They're not materially misstated, whether due to error or fraud. We do follow government auditing standards for our audit, and I am pleased to present that we have an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements for fiscal year 2024. All right. In this entire hundred plus page report here, 123 pages we have, there's a lot of statements and a lot of schedules in there. But there's only two statements in this entire report that bring all activities of the county together on the full accrual basis of accounting. So that, that brings not only like your general fund, which we'll talk about in a minute, your SPOLOST funds, your special revenue funds, but it also brings in your watered sewer fund. So it brings all those funds together on the full accrual basis of accounting. So we got those two statements. Those are what we call the government wide statements found on pages 15 through 17. You've got your statement of net position. It's going to be similar to a balance sheet and your statement of activities, which is like an income state. Few numbers from those statements. You'll see here, we talk about the government wide net position. So when we say net position, we're talking about equity. And, and I mentioned full accrual and not get too deep in the accounting here, but you've got, as far as, as far as equity is concerned, you've got net position and you've got fund balance. I know y'all look at fund balance a lot and we'll talk about fund balance here in just a moment as well. When we're talking about net position, you've got three categories of net position. You've got net investment and capital assets. It's going to be land, buildings, equipment, less accumulated depreciation on those buildings or equipment, less any debt utilized to acquire those assets. And for, for fiscal year 24, that was 155 million, 118, 795. You've got restricted net position. I always use the example, this is like SPOLOST funds that you've received. These are outside restrictions on these funds. So SPOLOST would be one example there, T-SPOLOST funds that you have not spent at, at fiscal year end would fall in that category. That's 30 million, 24,008, 16. And the residual remaining amounts, your unrestricted net position, 60 million, 611, 463. All right. Looking at your general fund, which of course is the chief operating fund of the county, I mentioned a moment ago, net position. We're going to talk here about fund balance as far as general funds. So those are both equity. It's just a different basis of accounting. And so when we're talking full accrual, which would be all your land, buildings, assets, equipment, debt, all those things I mentioned, all included. When you, when you all are looking, of course, at your operating budget throughout the year and you're looking at the general fund, you're looking at fund balance being, and that's on the modified accrual basis, which for like those capital assets we talked about earlier, those are, those are considered capital outland or expended as you, as you purchase those items at this level of accounting. So the general fund there, you'll find on pages 18, 21, 24, and 25, with 24 and 25 being budget versus actual for the year there. Revenues for the year, the general fund increased 2 million, 265, 615, or about 5.4%. You'll see there, I've noted a handful of items that changed significantly. So property taxes actually decreased 644, 914. You had local option sales tax increased 699, 04. Still seeing some increases there in, in certain areas. Obviously, the Costco project contributed a portion of that. You got intergovernmental revenues increase. That's going to be grants. The largest cause of this increase for this year was LRA funding, which is like LMIC funding from the state. And then interest income increased 899, 028 with increased interest rates there. On the expenditure side, expenditures also increased. They increased 2 million, 103, 640, about six and a half percent. And I've listed some different departments down through there and, and kind of what contributed to that increase. Large portion, as you can see throughout there, was personal services, more payroll and, and related expenses. You've got clerk of courts increased 330, 199. Law enforcement increased 607, 330, and the jail increased 299, 580. Public safety, 465, 096. That was also some materials and supplies there in addition to personal services. You've got public works decreased 2 million, 849, 183. That's largely due to some capital projects in the prior year and highways and streets, contract services, which can be road maintenance there in that case. Telecommunications increased 952, 250. That's broadband contract services. You've got parks and recreation increased 309, 17. That's personal services. And then debt service increased 974, 256. Again, due mostly to the Costco bonds, but also Sabitas, which you all probably remember me talking about last year. That's your subscription based information technology arrangements. New, new standard applied last year and it affected the, the county this year. As far as fund balance, I mentioned earlier, we talked a little bit about fund balance, but when we're talking about this fund balance, we're talking here specifically for the general fund. It's important to note, this is just the general fund, not all your governmental funds. So you have other, you know, SPOLOST funds, other capital projects funds. Those, those funds are all either restricted or assigned, set aside for, you know, capital projects that are all approved and that sort of thing. So I want, I wanted to clarify that because when we're talking about this number here, this is going to be your unrestricted fund balance of the general fund alone here. So this is, there's, there's five categories of fund balance. You've got non-spendable, which is like items that are not in spendable form, like a prepaid item or an inventory would fall in that category. You've got restricted, just like I talked about restricted net position, restricted fund balance is going to be funds like in a SPOLOST fund, for example. Your unspent SPOLOST money there will be in restricted fund balance. If you had a, some type, like, like those LMIC monies we were talking about earlier, if those are not spent at fiscal year end, you still recognize them as revenue, but those are considered to be restricted at, at, at fiscal year end. Then you've got assigned, which is where you all, or I think management can make a decision to just assign monies to certain projects or to certain purposes. Then you've got unassigned. And I skipped one. Actually, you've got committed, but I don't see committed real often. Committed would be similar to assign and then it requires a commitment from, from the governing body to, to set aside those funds for specific projects. So when we're talking about unrestricted fund balance here, we're talking about both unassigned and assigned. Restricted, committed, and non-spendable would not be in this classification. So the reason we use unrestricted is the Government Finance Office Association kind of looks at your fund balance and says that best practices, not, not good, bad, or indifferent, but best practices are that you maintain at least two to three months of unrestricted fund balance in your general fund. And you can see there, as you see, the county is healthy in that regard. At fiscal year 2024, it was 11 million, 492, 222, or about 33% of your expenditures, which is about right at four months. So 3.98 months. And again, we're talking here unrestricted fund balance of the general fund alone. So looking now at your water and sewer fund, pay up found on page 29, looking at operating income here, operating revenues and operating expenses. For the year, your operating revenues increased 654, 664, a little less than 5%. Water and sewer charges, as you can see there, both increased, water being 421, 397, sewer 254, 70. On the expense side, operating expenses, those also increased, 759, 488, or about 8.2%. And you can see there what contributed largely to cost of sales and services increased, 622, 381. Had a small, small change there in personal services and then depreciation on your capital assets increased 135, 293. I've mentioned SPOLOST and T-SPOLOST several times as I've talked through things here. So, so in this bound report here, you have several schedules. You've got SPOLOST schedules and there's two of them in there for two different referendums. You have open and you have T-SPOLOST schedule, which is your T-SPOLOST referendum. And you'll see there, we have details for each of those. If, if you flipped those schedules, there's additional details as far as specific projects approved in the referendum. As far as totals here, I've got for you, you can see for 2020, 15 SPOLOST, 335, 823 was spent on O'Conne County projects during 2024. For the 2021 SPOLOST referendum, there was 4 million, 916, 345 on county projects. Then you had these various amounts here, as you can see there, expended that were sent over to the cities and towns. So you've got City Watkinsville, Bogart, North High Shoals and Bishop there. As far as T-SPOLOST is concerned, same thing. You've got 5 million, 868, 258 on O'Conne County projects. You, you heard me mention earlier about the general fund having less road maintenance. Largely that's here in the T-SPOLOST funds where a lot of your road maintenance and projects are, are now held. And then you've got some amounts there to the cities and towns there in, in O'Conne County or T-SPOLOST as well. Those are all of course based on the referendums approved in our government agreements. All right. I talked about the independent audit report earlier. There's two other letters in the report this year that are, that are a product of us as your auditor. They're not necessarily the responsibility of the county. The second being our report on internal control, compliance and other matters. It's found on pages 110 and 111. Because we follow government auditing standards, we are required to assess your internal controls, take a look at your internal controls, your processes, procedures, policies, those sorts of things. Pleased to present that for 2024, we had no material weaknesses in the controls. We did have one significant efficiency was noted in an agency office. And then no material non-compliance in relation to the controls of the county. The third letter, again, product of us as your auditor, because the county expended more than $750,000 of federal funds during fiscal year 2024, we were required to perform a single audit. So this letter spells out the results of that audit. It's found on pages 112 through 114. And I'm pleased to present that we had no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies, and no material non-compliance in relation to those federal major programs, major federal programs. All right. I'd like to keep you all abreast of changes that are happening in relation to your accounting standards, your reporting. Any accounting or auditing standards that change, we try to keep you at least a step ahead as, as to when those are coming. We've been talking to you for years about leases and about Sabitas. Those are, those are now still, still required to be implemented, still, still affecting the county, but not, not new, I guess we'll say. So, so this year there was a new one that was a little bit of a, it kind of changed things and made things look a little bit differently. So when, when I know when you're, when you're flipping through these financials and you, you, I know you spend a lot of time digging in these things. So when you do, there, there's one, one change significant related to this GASB 100 that's found on, mostly on pages 21, or the first place you'll see it's pages 21 and 22. And so what this standard did is, is, is on accounting changes and error corrections. You've probably heard me use the term. Matter of fact, I think I presented last year and talked about a prior period adjustment. So that's one of the things this standard actually affects is how you account for those, how you disclose those. But one major thing it did that's kind of makes things look a little bit different is if you have a change in reporting entity. So I talked a lot about different funds so far tonight, but if you have a, the, the way, the way governmental accounting standards work or the way these reporting standards are, you have to report things on opinion units. So you have what they call major funds and non-major funds. And so when you report those major funds, those are reported alone, standalone. When you report non-major funds, those are reported together. And there's a combining statement for those. Those are in the aggregate. And then that total for those combined numbers comes up to your, to, to go with your major funds. I don't know if that makes sense, but what, what, where, where this went, what this, what happened with this is when you have a fund and there's a calculation that determines whether that's a major or a non-major fund. And so when you have a fund, a fund could go back and forth between whether it's major and non-major based on the activity of that fund. It's based on revenues, expenditures, assets and liabilities. So if you have a fund that calculates as a major fund this year, because maybe it has a large liability in there and it meets the criteria, but the next year you pay that down and it's no longer major, it becomes a non-major fund. And vice versa, they can move back and forth. When that happens, all you're doing really is removing that fund back to your combining statements to your non-major or moving it up to your standalone fund. The reason I'm calling so much attention to this, it can kind of confuse you if you don't, if you don't watch it. When you're looking at these funds, they, they've added this thing now called a ghost column that we're calling it. And what that does is, and you have one that, that, that affects this year, you have a, a formerly major fund or a formerly non-major fund. If you move between one or the other, rather than it just moving, they now want you to leave that fund where it was at, not report anything at all, all the way down the statement, except the beginning of last year's ending, the beginning fund balance and then a subtraction of that fund balance showing it going away. And then in the back, when you, where you moved it to, you just report it as normal. And the same if you move one from there. So what that leads you to, it's hard to see it, but if you flip to 21, 22, it's, it's, it's different. And you're looking at, you're thinking, this guy's made, what have they done with our financials here? You got this statement with a name on it and yet you don't have any numbers there. And so that is, that is required by GASB 100. It's, it's called a change in reporting entity. And so there are two of those that affect O'Conne County. So when you're looking, don't be alarmed. That's not just a print error where it didn't print the numbers. That's actually the way this has to be reported now. So and it also requires some disclosure. So let's kind of wanted to kind of explain. So when you're looking through your financials, that you'll see what I'm talking about. And the one I'm talking about on 21, or it's actually on page 21 is, is the administration building was formerly a major fund and it became a, a non-major fund. And then you had a, your T-SPOLOST fund, which was non-major last year is now major. So it, it came up to, to major. So it, if you look at T-SPOLOST on page 22, it doesn't look too, too different from the other funds. But if you go back to the combining statements in the non-major funds, you'll see that same ghost column for it back there because it moved from there, from the back to the front. This will move from the front to the back. So little, little confusing there. And I just want to make sure I clarify that. This, this is actually the third I've presented a couple of counties and this is the first one that's had this. So I've actually got to talk about it. Otherwise, it's just like I'm talking about this and people don't have any idea what I'm talking about, but you can actually see it in, in action here. So all right. So that's GASB 100. That did obviously, as you can see, impact fiscal year 2024. You've got one new standard coming. There's actually a couple of others that are coming as well, but this one's going to be somewhat significant and that's GASB 101 on compensated absences. So when I mentioned compensated absence, I'm talking about accrued vacation or sick leave, basically accrued leave in this case. And so this one, going to lessen some requirements on one thing, could cause some additional requirements on others. One thing it's going to do is you really have to evaluate all your leave now, whereas previously a lot of times sick leave didn't really qualify. There is a chance now, based on the standard, you have to, you know, we'll, we'll of course assist and implement, but you'll have to, there's a possibility that your liability could increase to include multiple types of leave instead of just what was previously just your accrued vacation time. That's one big, big piece of it. The other piece of it is actually lessens the requirement on disclosure. You currently have a beginning balance, increase, decrease, ending balance. But as you can imagine, on a vacation time, you're constantly accruing and paying that out throughout the year. This standard is going to remove that requirement to have increases and decreases because you, those are really kind of arbitrary numbers anyway to get, get back to that. So that it lessens that you can have a gross number instead of a addition and deduction there. And that concludes my presentation. I do have one quick other thing to, just to make you aware of it. I'm going to spend less than five, maybe even two minutes, one minute on probably really. You have a letter there with you. It says significant audit matters. This, this letter, a three page letter here, I will sum it up very quickly for you. This, this letter, if you were to take this exact letter from last year and compare it word for word with this one, the only changes would be the dates would change. The other thing that would change would be the new accounting standard, which we just talked about, GASB 100, the impact of the statement. Other than that, now, if there were changes on this, it would be things I would need to make you aware of, like difficulties dealing with management or difficulties performing the audit, those sorts of things. And I have none of that to report. This is, this, like I mentioned earlier, everything went very smoothly. So this, these are required communications. I'm required to communicate this information to you all as the board charged with governance. And so that's, that's what this is. And you, you, you don't want me to spend time just going to saw boilerplate information that we talk about year after year. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions at all that you may have.
Any questions for commissioners on that?
I've got one, just to clarify occasion, Clay, on, we're talking about that item on page 21, what you call the ghost accounting.
Ghost column.
Who is, who is that?
They.
Speaking to? I mean, I know FASB came up with, but if, if, if a citizen picked this up, what does that tell that citizen or what does it tell Wall Street? Who's it talking to?
Very good point. Now, I'm glad you bring that point. So, so yeah, GASB approved this. So you got the GASB who approves these things. And, and there was good intent here, I think. So the intent was, okay, if I'm taking last year's report, I'm taking this year's report and I'm comparing them. Well, I've got an administration building fund sitting there last year. Well, if it just goes away, it's gone. Where'd it go? And without knowing a whole lot about it, you'd have to go searching back to find that. So their intent was, we're going to show this here and show it. It started here and we're moving it back. It's now changing where it's reported to kind of clarify that. The problem is to me, it can be confusing as well. I mean, it's, it's, it's somewhat confusing in that they're having to issue some technical guidance on it now about how to make sure it's shown correctly. So that tells you right there that's.
But does it drop off the next?
Yeah. So this, this will drop off next year. So this, it's only in the year in which that reporting changes. And the reason for it is just that very thing because you, you've got fund balance sitting in there at the end of last year because it's changing there's where that fund balance goes. So this is just showing it going away. And it, there, there was a lot of discussion on this about, okay, should it be zeros all down through there? And my quick argument was absolutely not. Then you're reporting that it was zero, that the revenues, the taxes for the administration building or the intergovernmental revenues were zero. They, they weren't really zero. There's actual numbers in the back being reported for this fund. So that's why you don't see even a total fund balance, the bottom zero. It's just 77, 924 and negative 77, 924. It's not zero. It's just the fund balance in and out. That's all that is. And so very, that's why I was very clear about this can be very confusing. It's meant to be very, it's meant to be, to clarify, to keep from confusion, but I think it may cause some confusion, just my personal opinion on it. But
That's what FASB is all about or GASB.
FASB, GASB, you're right. They keep us busy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Our next time is the second reading in public hearing on for consideration of proposed updates to the alcohol ordinance. Turn that over to Daniel.
Thank you. I was, I was glad to see all of our guests weren't wearing red shirts. Some of you will remember that. No real changes since the first reading. I did clean up some language in there as I told you I was going to. But I'll, I'll kind of quickly run through what the changes are that we're making with this second, with this ordinance amendment. We're adding brew pubs as a licensed category. It still has to be a restaurant. It still has to have the 75, 25 on what it's serving in the restaurant. They can serve us, they can sell a certain number of barrels, up to 5,000 barrels to a wholesaler. They can't sell to retailers. They have to sell to a wholesaler. Um, a barrel, somebody said we needed a definition. We've, we've got, put the state definition in, which is a barrel is thirty one gallons. So, uh, what fifteen thousand gallons or so. Um, we've moved the fees to the fee schedule and when you make your um, motion to adopt the ordinance, if you do, we need to include just language that the fees will be, uh, will amend the fee schedule. Uh, shouldn't be very much of that. And then when y'all do the budget, you'll look at whether those fees are still appropriate. Um, the administration, and this is a, a major, uh, change, the administration of this will move to the planning department. They'll issue licenses within sixty days of an application. If they find one that they, uh, have some, uh, they're unusual circumstances, then they can refer that to the board of commissioners for its action. Still has to be within sixty days. Um, we've added a definition to restaurants that would allow a theater to be taken as a whole and qualify as, uh, as a restaurant, but they still have to meet the seventy five twenty five, um, outside of ticket sales. So food and beverages and alcoholic beverages, just like a restaurant, meet, um. I clarified that the new fees, whatever new fees the board adopts would apply to licenses issued after January first, because we've already got licenses that you're going to act on tonight. Uh, there was some language in the license definitions that wasn't consistent from one class to the next. So I just made all those more parallel and I think it reads a little better. Um, renewals have to be filed by November fifteenth. We used to say if they hadn't filed it by January fifteenth, that they had to get a new license. I shortened that up and said, if they don't file their renewal by December fifteenth, they have to start the process over. I don't see any real point in waiting two months to have to file an application. So we gave, we're giving them, um, well, they've got to file it by November fifteenth. So they've got all the time before that, but then they've got kind of thirty days of grace to get their application in. Um, we changed all the good reputation and character language to more specific recital of, of things that would disqualify an applicant. Uh, felony convictions, crimes of moral turpitude, things like that. Um, one of the things we've run into over the years, if somebody's buying a business, they have to get, they have to get a new license. So that always has, there's always a timing issue in there. So I've clarified that if someone is purchasing a business, they can go ahead and apply for a license and all the action can be taken, uh, and license would then be issued at the point where the closing actually takes place. Um, Holly and I probably have had twenty conversations about that over the years, about how you handle it. And I think that'll make that a little bit simpler. Uh, Sunday opening hours changed to eleven AM to be consistent with state law on the Sunday brunch law. Um, we've put a position in there that, and we really already have recognized this, that a restaurant may exist within a building that houses other businesses as long as it otherwise, uh, follows the ordinance. And we did a significant beefing up of reporting and audit provisions that either the planning or the finance departments can use to check on payment of taxes or whether the definition of a restaurant is still being met.
Any questions from commissioners? Do we have any public comment on this item? With that, will entertain a motion to approve the proposed updates to the alcohol ordinance as well as amend the FY twenty five fee schedule for alcohol fee.
And, and we'll, we'll just mention, so we've said it out loud, the service map is attached and it's part of your package tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion to, uh, approve the update to our ordinance as regulates the sale of alcoholic beverages in this county to include those changes as presented along with the, uh, fee schedule for FY twenty five will be amended.
Motion second and discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Motion carries. We're now going to move into our hearings and actions on zoning matters. So for any first time call zoning matter tonight, the rezon petition shall be presented by the county staff with no time limit. The applicant and those signing up to speak for the petition shall be allowed a total of twenty minutes, less the applicant's reserve for rebuttal. Those signing up to speak against petitions shall also be allowed a total of twenty minutes. After that, the public comments, uh, so portion will be closed and the board will have an opportunity to ask questions as they see appropriate. And then the board will take action as set out in the unified development code. With that, we'll go ahead and call our first rezon, which is rezon KSP twenty four dash zero one one five, St. Mary's Highlands Hills Incorporated. This is a rezon from R three to B two, it's ten acres at Plaza Parkway and Jennings Mill Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezon P twenty four zero one one five, St. Mary's Highland Hills, Inc., applicant and owner. This is a portion of C zero one J zero zero one, currently zoned R three in the regional center character area. And again, the rezon request is to rezon the fourteen point three three acre property from R three multifamily residential district to B two highway business district. This is the recorded plat you have in your application packets, the concept plan, uh, showing the proposed gym as well as hotel. These are the architectural images submitted with the application, uh, site pictures. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions, uh, number four, at least eighty percent of exterior wall surfaces of all buildings and structures shall be either brick veneer, stone veneer or glass or combination thereof. Additional primary and accent materials are allowed as indicated in U D C section three of six oh three. Number five, surface areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six foot masonry wall with facade materials matching the exterior of principal structures with black painted metal steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Number six, an updated traffic impact analysis shall be submitted for review prior to approval of the preliminary site plan plat to address comments from the transportation consultant. Number seven, all lots shall be accessed via Plaza Parkway. A one foot no access easement shall be recorded on the subject property on the frontage of Paul Brown Parkway Loop ten and Jennings Mill Road. And number eight, the following uses shall be excluded, dollar stores, variety stores, massage therapy establishment, car, motorcycle, recreational vehicle and boat dealers, pawn shops, cigar and tobacco stores, including vape shops, electronic signature store, cig, cigarette stores, tattoo parlors, used merchandise stores and recreational vehicle parks and subdivisions. The planning commission recommended approval with one amendment to number eight, and that would be to miss, change massage therapy establishment or add in parentheses, except sports medicine, which may be associated with the gym. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering, ten fifty Barber Creek Drive. Um, we are representing the applicant this evening, White Oak Development Properties. Uh, the property is currently zoned R three multifamily residential. Um, since there's currently no sewer, uh, residential sewer available, the applicant is seeking to rezon the property for a B two commercial development. Um, uses are proposed as a high end indoor, outdoor help fitness club and a business hotel on two lots. Uh, the type of ownership for both lots will be fee simple. Uh, the estimated size of the hotel is fifteen thousand square feet and the size of the help fitness club will be seventy two thousand square feet. Uh, the help fitness club will include an outdoor lap pool area, an outdoor area for tennis and pickleball courts. Uh, activities to be conducted inside of the, um, help fitness club shall include workout floors, fitness studios, personal training services, cardio group classes such as yoga, cycling, Pilates, et cetera. Uh, other activities in the pool area could include typical aquatic activities such as group aerobic classes, swim lessons and lap swimming. Um, the developer will be the manager, owner of this and maintain it. Um, and they are planning to do a family centric, uh, type of development, summer camps. Um, they have a, a daycare within the facility where parents come and, and they can leave their children there as they work out. So very family centric. Um, I do want to mention, I know Guy touched on a little bit, that condition number eight, uh, we did discuss this at, um, at the planning commission, um, just our concern was a health club could have massage therapists on staff or as part of their, um, programming and services. Um, so, you know, as long as that sports medicine is allowed within the facility, I know St. Mary's Wellness, um, has that as part of their programming. So we just want to make sure, and then Guy and I talked a little bit that his, his intent was that to be, you know, if that's standalone, it wouldn't be allowed. So, um, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon request? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
Justin, how many rooms would the hotel have?
Um.
Where footage doesn't help me with that.
Yeah, I think it was.
Eighteen?
Yes, sir.
I've got a question. Mr. Herring, the, uh, proposed one foot no access easement, is a physical inspection been made to see if there's any existing driveways in that easement?
No, sir.
There's no, no?
There's no existing driveways in that easement.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I have.
And, and their application was ninety units in the hotel.
Ninety. Mr. Harden, you, you might should have asked whether one ever permitted, whether it's there or not. That's true.
Any other questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve P twenty two tweet, P twenty four oh one one five, St. Mary's Highland Hills Incorporated. Rezon from R three to B two, in acres Plaza Parkway and Jennings Mill Residential with eight conditions.
Thank you. Here we have a motion to second to approve rezon request P twenty four dash zero one one five. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is rezon request, uh, P twenty four dash zero one eight seven, Brenda Dupree, the rezon from AG to OIP, point six eight acres at one zero zero one Ruth Jackson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is rezon P twenty four zero one eight seven, Brenda Dupree, trustee, applicant and owner. This is parcel B zero two zero four two. It's currently zoned AG and the community village character area. And the request is to rezon the point six eight acre property from AG Agricultural District to OIP Office Institutional Professional District. The recorded plat that's in your application, the concept plan, the current, uh, site pictures. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions and the planning commission recommends approval of the same conditions. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, Brian Kimble, Card Engineering, ten ten Commerce Drive, Bogart, Georgia. We're, uh, we're representing the, um, the, the property owner and, um, Armor Homes. Armor Homes has a property currently under contract purchased from, um, Ms. Brenda Dupree. Um, they're a local, you don't know who Armor Homes are, they're a local, um, construction company. Got a representative here from them if you want to hear from them. Uh, they're primarily, um, residential development, um, um, garages, um, renovations to houses, basements, uh, pool houses, et cetera. That's kind of what their, their go-to is. They're really wanting to have a, a storefront, so to speak, uh, that's visible. They want this to look like a house. They want it to look like their product that they provide. Um, and so we've got a, uh, in the pocket, you see kind of a representative image of what that looks like. Um, hardy plank siding, um, brick or stone accents. Uh, it's a four thousand square foot footprint, which includes an attached garage at the back. So if you see the L shape, that back section is the attached garage. They'll, they do have a construction equipment that they may need to pull in there. There will be no storage of equipment on site other than what's inside the garage. Um, the site is, the Santer Sewer is not available for the site, so it'll be onsite septic. There's currently a well on site that had to be decommissioned because of the way the, the site lays. Uh, so they will, will, will request to hook on to county water. Um, outside of that, um, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have or the agent is here or the, uh, the owner is here if you want to talk to them. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion when ready.
I'll make the motion to approve rezon E two four dash zero one eight seven, Brenda H. Dupree rezon from AG to OIP, point six eight acres, one zero zero one Ruth Jackson Road residential with three conditions.
Thank you. Motion is second, approve rezon request P twenty four dash zero one eight seven with three conditions. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next item will be a variance request, P twenty four dash zero one four four, Elizabeth Price Dolvin Foundation. This is a hardship variance from a unified development code, article three, section three point five two C six, fifty six point one zero acres at thirty four seventy Greensboro Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, this is variance P twenty four zero one four four, uh, Elizabeth Prince Dolvin Foundation. It's parcel C zero six zero zero nine E and zero zero nine F on Greensboro Highway. It's currently zoned AG and the agricultural preservation character area. And again, it's a request, uh, to the short-term rental standards requiring owner occupied dwellings and the owner to be present when short-term rental guests are present. Uh, that's section three, five, two dot C six of the U D C. The applicant is requesting allow for an off-site property manager for the requested short-term rental with no onsite occupancy. This is a recorded plat in your application packets, the concept plan, location of the current structure. Uh, the architectural plans of the existing building that, uh, is to be shown, uh, for the short-term rental accommodations. And based upon the standards and limitations for hardship variance approval, this request does not meet all necessary standards, conditions to grant a hardship variance as this would create an unpermitted use. Staff recommends denial of the request. As the application indicates, there will be no onsite manager of the short-term rental and thus changing the use. Thank you.
Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening. Um, my name is John Costantino with Costantino Law. I'm here on behalf of the Elizabeth Price Dolvin Foundation. And I won't take up too much of your time today. I, I've dealt with a lot of short-term rental ordinances in the area and I understand and respect the intent and purposes behind them. Might be a little bit of confusion on this particular application. I'm not sure how it got there, but the Dolvin Foundation is requesting what we would consider an onsite property manager. It's full-time property manager who lives on the same site that this, this property is located to be allowed to serve in, uh, the absence of an owner because the applicant itself is a nonprofit charitable foundation based here in Watkinsville and it does not have an owner per se. This is, uh, the home place of the late Elizabeth Dolvin, who was a long time, uh, O'Conne County resident. And this foundation was sort of set up upon her death, uh, and, and funded by her estate, the largest asset being, uh, this property off Elder Mill Road, um, where this home place is, is located. And so I could certainly go into details about unique nature of the, the applicant or the hardship for denying this would be, but I just wanted to look, look at this, it's from three very general categories for your consideration and, and why we think that the variance requested is, uh, is reasonable and in line with what is intended by the, the ordinance in question. The categories I want to look at quickly are the applicant, the impact and the result, uh, of this particular application. Touched briefly on the applicant, but again, it's a private charitable foundation that is primarily in the grant-making business. It, 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 annually gives out amounts to local charities like OCAF, ESP and others, uh, as part of its charitable mission. And ultimately its goal is to utilize the property holdings that it has, which includes a few hundred acres off Elder Mill, another large track off Wire Bridge and, uh, some other buildings. Want to utilize them for the public good. We're trying to work with, um, the Athens Area Community Foundation and others to try to develop some sort of center or park or, or on this property and the other Dolvin property foundation. So, um, that's sort of the, the general purpose of the applicant. And so he said, it's managed by two trustees, one of whom lives in Hushton and the other lives in Atlanta. And so it does not have an owner capable of occupying this, but it does have a full-time property manager who lives on site and is sitting back in, in the back corner over there, Ms. Elizabeth Dulabon, who would be residing in the basement of the residence where these are located. Uh, and so we're hopeful that that would take into consideration. Wanted to talk briefly about the impact that the approval would have. Wanted to talk briefly about the impact that the approval would have of the, the, uh, variance here. And basically, I don't think you're going to find a property anywhere close to Watkinsville that's going to be less problematic for a short-term rental than this one. It sits on a fifty-six acre tract surrounded by a hundred and thirty acre tract also owned by the Dolvin Foundation. Um, apart from the other residents on the same property that's approximately three hundred feet away from this one. There isn't another improvement within fifteen hundred feet. The closest residence not owned by the Dolvin Foundation, I believe, is thirty-five forty, uh, Greensboro Highway. And it's about fifteen hundred feet away through very dense woods. There's a direct private driveway access to and from Greensboro Highway. And more parking than you could possibly need off, uh, off-street. And, uh, plenty of access for emergency vehicles. So I don't think that it would pose a hindrance that way. And then lastly, sort of talk about the result or the impact were the foundation's request to be granted. I mean, if the commission were to, to agree, this would be a short-term rental, essentially full-time staffed by a professional property manager who would live onsite and ensure that the short-term rental was, was operated safely and in accordance with, with the ordinance. I think that she would be there day and night regardless, because that is where she lives. And that is, that is her primary job is to care for, uh, the foundation's assets. But I feel that that would be much more attentive than your average homeowner, who, let's face it, we know the requirements. But your average homeowner in an owner occupied Airbnb is probably going to take off for the weekend when they rent it out for, uh, a football game or something. And that's not going to be the case with the Dolvin Foundation. And again, this is honestly just a placeholder, a, a, a way to use the land temporarily as they develop bigger plans, uh, to hopefully dedicate it to the public use within the next three to five years. And so, hope you take that into consideration with this application.
Thank you. We may have questions in a minute, just have a seat. Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance request? Does anyone wish to speak against? They have a, go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
I think I've got one, Counselor. I may ask you, um, did it ever cross the, the desk that, back when y'all were working on this, to come before the commission and ask for ordinance change or modification instead of looking at a variance?
To be honest, uh, sir, I just sort of, we started the application process and I, and until recently, I wasn't even confident that this hearing today was, whether it was on the Airbnb application as a whole, or whether it was on the variance to the owner occupation requirement. But in, in hindsight, we certainly should have, could have done more on the front end to try to, to get around this. But this was the, uh, the directions we were sort of recommended in terms of applying for this.
She brought up the, the issue with homeowners maybe not being as attentive, uh, versus what you're proposing. If, if the person that was watching the Dolvin property had to be absent. What's the replacement?
Well, there are several other employees of the foundation. In fact, a few, uh, live in the, the other house next door that could certainly stand in that stead if necessary. But, uh, she doesn't. You don't go, you don't go places very often, do you, Ms. Dooliban? That's certainly something we, we could, uh, account for. And as a practical matter, that the foundation would want someone on present, onsite anyway, because it has more liability concerns than your average homeowner, I guess, in this respect. So.
I had a question, but God, God, is the, uh, ordinance as it is written, it creates this conflict. Is that indicative just to this zoning, or is that the case for all zoning in the county?
It's, it's the case for all zoning. It's, uh, under the short-term rental portion of the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, so it doesn't, it, it's not the fact that it's in an ag zone?
That's right. No, sir.
Doesn't matter?
No, no. That's right. And if you'll note in their application, uh, you know, the, the, um, onsite resident would not be in the building. They would be in a building three hundred yards away from the proposed rental units.
Okay. Was there ever a point that I read that they were going to live in the basement?
That, that's right. That they would be in the basement of the other house, not
Oh.
where the rental units are.
Oh, okay.
According to their application.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Since the basement, three four seven zero. Reason they said three four seven four, they wouldn't give me three four seven zero B as a basement. They said they can't, they can't do that. When I moved into basement, so they gave me three four seven four. So it seems like it's a different residence than three four seven four is actually the basement of three four seven zero. Three four seven two is up the hill.
Thank you.
So what was she saying? I think she lives in the basement.
Right.
Okay.
The guy said it was different housing. So, God, do we agree that she lives in the basement of the rental property?
If you'll notice on page, uh, let's see, it's under the, um, Costantino Law memo in your application packets. Um, it states, uh, the foundation's property manager lives less than three hundred feet from the subject property in a basement apartment located on the ground level of the property, uh, known as three four seven two. And on the site plan, the rental units are shown separate from that structure. So again, staff believes that the ordinance should be upheld and, uh, uh, owner should be at the location. Thank you.
God, let's stay right there. The question is, is it because it's not the owner to stay in there is the issue, or is it fact? I mean, help.
Yes, sir. That's right. The ordinance requires that the owner be onsite during the rental time. And that's to have that responsible party there.
Okay. So is the variance they're asking for that variance, or the fact that they don't do or don't live in the basement?
The variance is, the, the, it is a hardship variance request on their part. Um, that they cannot have an owner because there is, it is a foundation.
Right, right.
That's the hardship.
Okay.
That's what they are requesting to be a hardship. In staff's opinion, that's not a hardship. That is, that is simply the facts of the case, that they cannot have a property owner there. And therefore, they should not run a short-term rental. It would be a separate use if you had to use someone other than an owner, such as a bed and breakfast or something like that.
So the fact that the caretaker is living in the basement or not is not the issue?
That's right. Yes, sir.
I got, both of you are there, so you, you can, you can pipe in and answer this too. Uh, what would stop, if we approve this, what would stop everybody in the county that wants to have the same thing come up with a hardship variance? I, I, you want to?
That was actually a point that I, I meant to address when I was rushing through it, is that, you know, I, I, I would imagine that a large point, uh, or sort of justification behind the, the planning department wanting to reject this is sort of the slippery slope fear that they allow one corporate, non-human occupant owner to do it. Then, then it'll open the floodgates for, for, for many more. And I've seen that problem in Athens and otherwise with, you know, commercial professionally run short-term rentals. Um, I, I think that the Dolvin Foundation itself is not as amenable to replication. It's a five oh one C three nonprofit foundation. It's a daunting process to get applied for it. It's certainly a cost prohibitive corporate entity structure to have if you're going to be running an Airbnb. And it, um, I, I, again, I mean, it, it, I guess that it could theoretically open the door to other private foundation nonprofits. But I, I don't think it would apply to other entity types. I think it's pretty separate and distinct in its own right.
I, I would also tell you that everybody doesn't read the fine print.
True. Myself included, because I think I'm the one who made the mistake saying about the address. I'm still a little confused about it. I was just out there the other day, but, um, that's certainly true.
I'll be quite honest with you. I mean, I would rather be dealing with this just as a straight-up, not as a coming up with a, you know, hardship. Because really, to me, it's, it, it's your choice. You got a choice and it's not like you, you've been thrown off the bus and you've got to make the best of it. Uh, but, you know, we made the, the ordinance to try to check this really-nilly stuff going on in subdivisions and, and other places. So that's, yeah, I'd rather tell you straight up.
Absolutely.
That would, my, my preference would be it be dealt with as an ordinance change if these things are, would be allowed. Know a, a caretaker under a, a different umbrella instead of, you know, just private property owners.
Absolutely.
Not, not go for a, a variance on it.
Right. And it, that certainly makes sense. I honestly thought that would be a much larger fight to be had, perhaps, in terms of the, the, the overall picture of the ordinance. I, I get the ordinance. I like the way it's written. I was just hoping that the foundation had an interesting little carve-off that wasn't really going to be something you have to deal with very often, but.
Well, it's not, it's, it's not necessarily your foundation. It's what we have to deal with, with everybody else that wants to do that same thing. And to try to keep it under some type of control. Otherwise, we get all the complaints. You won't get any complaints.
Oh, absolutely. That, that I get, so.
Anyway, that's, that's my opinion.
There are no other questions. We'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion to deny variance P two four dash zero one four four Elizabeth Price Dolvin Foundation. Hardship variance from Unified Development Code Article Three, Section three five two C six, fifty-six point ten acres, thirty-four seventy Greensboro Highway Presidential.
Second. We have a motion is second to deny variance request P twenty-four dash zero one four four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is a continuation of variance request P twenty-four dash zero one six one Hunter Hargrave. Request to reduce the minimum rear, uh, and side setbacks. It's point six acres at thirteen eighty-one. I got the wrong one. Just saw the wrong address on here.
Yes, sir. Um, twelve thirty, O'Conne Forest.
Twelve thirty.
Yes. Again, uh, thanks, Chairman Commissioners, variance P twenty-four zero one six one, Deborah Hargrave, applicant owner. Uh, this is located at O'Conne Forest, uh, B zero seven A zero one two A. Currently zoned R one suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the request was for a, a variance for a metal building structure without permits from the O'Conne County Unified Development Code, Section four ten oh one C one and Table four point one to allow an accessory structure to encroach twelve point eight five feet into the rear forty-foot setback and zero point five five feet into the ten-foot side setback. Uh, the recorded plat that you have in your packet and the concept plan that you have in, in your packet, uh, that was discussed, uh, last time. Slightly larger version, uh, we have met with Mr. Hargrave and discussed, uh, after the board's, uh, opinion on the, uh, the, the over a thousand square foot requirement. And he is suggesting that he would remove, uh, this end of the building. Uh, so the wall and the, and the roof structure would be removed to get the barn under, uh, the thousand square foot limit. And so, uh, that has been proposed and staff is comfortable with that. Once we have the ability to have a building permit and, and do that inspection, uh, the other end would, would remain covered and, and walled in. Uh, still needing the variance, uh, from the board on the setbacks. Uh, these are architectural renderings submitted. Again, the structures on this end would be removed. Uh, these would stay. Again, the site prior to construction, after construction, you've seen these slides. Um, slightly larger version. Additional documentation that was submitted, uh, by Mr. Hargrave, uh, shows environmental health has approved the location. Uh, so that was in question. Uh, they've agreed that that is, uh, the, the best location for the structure. Uh, you have in your packets, uh, showing the location of the septic lines. Again, the additional documentation submitted. Uh, Mr. Hargrave has also, uh, through his environmental health permit, uh, suggested additional structure additions to the rear of the primary structure and to the front. Uh, these would be required, these would require additional septic capacity. Um, and those, that septic capacity or repair area would be in the middle of the property, which would be in this location, thus preventing the structure from being moved forward. Uh, this is just a topo of the site showing the location of the building. And several views that, uh, you have been, that have been submitted with this, uh, from the road of the, of the structure. Uh, you'll note the structure in the rear of the house there, uh, side view of it, um, directly from the road. Again, directly from the road, zoomed in. Uh, showing the structure as it currently sits, this is the location where this wall and this roof will be removed to get under the thousand square feet. Uh, the current septic lines are in this area. This is the side that would remain. Again, distance from the property line, just under ten feet. Another view from the road as presented, uh, by the applicant. Uh, existing shed to be removed. A view from the side property of the structure. And staff maintains it's the original, uh, opinion that it does not meet the special, the conditions to grant special exception variance, uh, as a hardship. Uh, it was created by the property owner of the construction of an unpermitted structure. Thank you.
As you recall, we received, uh, all the public comment during our last meeting, so we'll move right into questions from commissioners on any item on this, uh, variance request.
Uh, Mr. Herring, did not, did we receive, uh, correspondence from the adjoining property owners? That they were fine with the encroachment?
Yes, sir. We did. Uh, we received support letters from the surrounding, the adjacent properties. Yes, sir.
As far as the encroachment?
That's right, for, for all variances. Yes, sir.
Oh, actually, it backs up to us different subdivision behind it.
It does, and we received one from them as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
The encroachment on the side is just inches, what are they showing?
Roughly six inches. Yes, sir. And it's only a portion, that front portion, uh, it's not the entire length.
Right. Column, basically.
Yes, sir.
And encroachment on the back?
I believe it was twelve and a half feet. Yeah, into it. Yes, sir.
As far as the not getting a building permit, what, what's the, is there a penalty or?
It's a triple permit fee. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, so that would, should the board approve the variances, that would be the next step, is for him to apply for the building permit and that fee would then apply.
And he, he would have to remove the side before he could get the permit, right?
That's right. Yes, sir.
If there are other questions, we'll entertain a motion for variance request P twenty-four dash zero one six one.
Mr. Hargrave, where are you? Uh, if this is approved tonight, what are we going to do about the, the work vehicles? And I won't take your word on it.
I'm not, I'm not driven truck or trailer through there at all in the last month. Um, and I don't have any plans to, uh, other than there may be some, if, I may have to use some stuff to take down part of the building.
Outside of that, just like every, everyday type stuff.
Outside of that, everyday type stuff is, you know, to, I did not realize that people were not happy with it, so, you know. to, I did not realize that people were not happy with it. So, you know, had I known, I'm not there to make people mad.
Appreciate that.
I try to get along with everybody and mind my own business.
Good luck.
We'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve variance P twenty four zero one six one Hunter Hargrave request to reduce minimum required rear and side setbacks. Zero point six acres thirteen eighty one Hickory Hill Drive residential with the one condition.
That's a twelve thirty.
Twelve thirty.
Yeah.
Yep, twelve thirty.
O'Conne Crossing. Right. O'Conne Forest. They've got O'Conne Crossing in my mind. O'Conne Forest. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve variance request P twenty four dash zero one six one. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is variance request P twenty four dash zero one six four. Michael Heath is request to reduce the minimum required rear setback point one zero seven six acres at thirteen eighty one Hickory Hill Drive.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to pass the step away from this one, but that is my subdivision. Nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Again, this is variance P twenty four zero one six four and P twenty four zero two one three Michael Heath, applicant owner. This is parcel C zero three B zero zero two E and Hickory Hill subdivision. It's currently zoned AR in the country states character area. And P twenty four zero one six four is a special exception variance request from the O'Conne Unified Development Code Section four ten oh one and Table four point one to reduce the rear accessory building setback from forty feet to twenty nine point five feet for an accessory structure, the guest house. And P twenty four zero two one three is a special exception variance from O'Conne County Unified Development Code Section three five one oh two for a guest house to be placed in the side yard. The recorded plat in your application packet, the concept plan, a slightly larger version showing the location of the proposed guest house. Architectural drawings, elevation submitted with the application. And P twenty four zero one six four, based upon the standards limitations for special exception variance approval, this request does meet all necessary conditions to grant special exception variance to the setback standards. Staff recommends approval of our one standard condition. And P twenty four zero two one three, again, based on the standards limitations, does meet all the necessary conditions. And staff recommends approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Now we'll hear from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening Commissioners, and thank you guys for putting together this presentation. I'm Kailin Kittle with SPG Planners and Engineers. Address is seventeen twenty five Electric Avenue, Suite three twenty. And we feel that this is a more appropriate location for the guest house. Due to the existing placement of the the main house, it would not be possible to to build an accessory structure behind the house. And also, the side yard is quite steep and we feel that this placement then would allow for it would be a better placement due to it would help the constructability, excuse me, for the for the building to avoid extensive grading, excessive retaining walls and clearing of the site. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. And Mike Heath is here as well, the owner, to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone wish to speak for either one of these variance requests? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll close public comments at this time. Any questions from Commissioners? We'll take variance request P twenty four one six four first.
I'll make the motion to approve variance P twenty four dash zero one six four from Michael Heath. Request to reduce the minimum required rear setback on the one point oh seven six acres located thirteen eighty one Hickory Hill Drive residential.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve variance request P twenty four dash zero one six four with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll take the variance P twenty four zero two one three.
Make a motion to approve variance P twenty four zero two one three Michael Heath request to place guest house inside yard one point zero seven six acres thirteen eighty one Hickory Hill Drive residential with the one condition.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval of variance request P twenty four zero two one three with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Diane, if you could ask Chuck to come back in, we'll. Our next item is consider appointments to the O'Conne County Library Board.
Make a motion to appoint Angela Moss Hill, Frederick Lutz, Daphne Norton, and Kelly Hansford to the O'Conne County Library Board full term starting January first twenty five to December thirty first two thousand twenty nine. That's submitted.
We have a motion and second to appoint the full terms, January twenty twenty five to December thirty one twenty twenty nine. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We have one more for the vacated term that will expire in December thirty one twenty twenty six.
I'll also make that motion to appoint Wanda Golds to serve that term.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is consider appointment to the O'Conne County Farmland Preservation Ranking Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion to point James Thad Patchant and Hunter Grayson to a three year term beginning January the first include December thirty first of two thousand twenty seven.
Second. We have a motion and second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is consider appointment to the O'Conne County Board of Health.
I'll make a motion to appoint Michael Martin for the full term of January first twenty five to December thirty first two thousand thirty. Also, Amy Mastretta for the vacant term through December third first two thousand twenty six.
Second. Yeah, a motion and second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is consider appointment to the May Court's Policy Committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'll make a recommend nomination for Kirk Ship for May Court's Policy Committee begin immediately.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item of the first quarter FY twenty five financial update. Melissa.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening Commissioners. I am here this evening to give you a financial update for the first quarter, which takes us through September the thirtieth of two thousand twenty four. And we will review some of the funds that our auditors mentioned earlier, looking at our general fund, our operating revenues and expenditures. So capital expenditures and project status updates, sales taxes, and our largest enterprise fund, the water resources, revenue and expenses. So first, looking at our general fund revenues for first quarter, we have revenues of approximately four point four million, which is right at eleven percent collected. This is exactly where we would anticipate being and is consistent with prior year's first quarter collections. So looking at the same information by sources of revenues, our taxes, which currently includes our local option sales taxes for first quarter are collected at seven percent. In second quarter, you'll see some of the property tax collections as well as the insurance premium taxes come in. Charges for services and licenses and permits are on track. Intergovernmental, you'll see it ninety three percent. That includes grant funding. Our Elmeg funding came in during the first quarter this fiscal year, which is different from prior years. And that full year to date amount is seven hundred and fifty six thousand three hundred and ten dollars is one hundred percent Elmeg grant. Fines and forfeitures at eight percent, typical miscellaneous revenues at twenty three percent. Other financing sources includes vehicle sales. So we're at forty three percent year to date. And investment income you'll see at ninety two percent is related to two factors. One, conservative budgeting, so having that being compared to a lower budget number as well as the current market rate conditioning is not slowing during the first quarter. See a little bit of a change of that in the second quarter, but year to date overall, we'll exceed our budget on that line item. Looking at related expenditures for first quarter at eight point five million, which is twenty percent spent. What I noticed different this year from prior years is our capital outlays are at forty percent to budget for the year. We typically order our capital outlays in the first quarter of the year, but in past years, we haven't been receiving those goods until much later. So that's a sign that we are beginning to receive things more timely from point of order. Our debt service is also at forty nine percent for first quarter, which is just paid out on scheduled disbursements. But I would like to mention that the two thousand and sixteen bond series for the Parkway Boulevard Road has been paid in full during the first quarter of FY twenty five. And other costs, which include disbursements to agencies, are at fifty one percent during first quarter to budget. And that's because of annual payments that are made at the beginning of the year to other agencies. Some agencies are paid once a year, all the beginning. Other agencies are paid on a quarterly basis. And looking by department, kind of using that twenty percent as a benchmark in spending, most departments are on target. Financial C is at twenty seven percent. We have a heavy professional services for audit services at the beginning of the fiscal year. Juvenile court at thirty seven percent. We have an intergovernmental contract that's paid in full at the beginning of the year. Information technology at thirty percent has a lot of our IT arrangements that are paid on an annual basis, paid at the beginning of the year for software agreements. Community development line item holds our debt services. And joint governmental programs at thirty two percent holds those payments out to the intergovernmental agencies such as the Health Department, Advantage Behavioral, ESP, and others. In the general fund, we had budgeted in our original adopted budget, the capital items you see listed here. Storage area network, not started at this time, but the jail locking system upgrade has been completed. Zero turns have been ordered and received for Public Works. And parks and recreation equipment has, the workman piece of equipment has been received and the mower is ordered and not yet received. The infrastructure line item there is a budget in case it's needed for the Mars Hill expansion, but at this time has not been used. And then the board did amend for additional capital items in the general fund. The call manager upgrade is still in process, along with Lake Creek acquisitions. And we have vehicles in the capital category as well. Parks and Recreation, Tax Assessor's Office, and Fleet Maintenance have all received the vehicles that they were budgeted for. And the boom bucket truck for the road department is currently in process this week. In the capital fund, we had the following listed items adopted in the original budget. Parks mowing equipment from prior year has been received in the current year. Hog Mountain Multi-Use Path, a preliminary service is still ongoing. Tower backups for E nine one one have not been started at this time, and the Viper Communication Upgrade for E nine one one are in process. And you can see the amendments listed below. Hog Mountain Multi-Use Path shares the capital fund funding source as well as T-SPOST. You'll see that in a couple of places. Dawson Park Engineering is in process, along with Miller's Lake Drive Culvert. And the four forty one collection site scale replacement has recently been completed as well. Local option sales taxes are reported in the general fund. For first quarter, we've collected two point eight million, which is around a seven percent increase over prior year. And we're twenty six percent collected to budget of ten point seven million. Sploß Sales Tax, which is reported in the capital funds at three point one million, an increase of approximately seven percent over prior year as well. And we have collected forty six percent of the budget of six point eight million. The budget does not reflect our anticipated collections, but reflects our planned expenditure so that we could have a balanced budget. So with the collections coming in, we anticipate building a fund balance in Sploß. This is for the Sploß twenty twenty one referendum. And that fund balance can be used to fund larger projects in whole in the current year or future years. And T-SPOST also reported in its own capital fund at two point nine million. It's an increase of almost eight percent over prior year and twenty seven percent collected of our budget of ten point six million. So our sales taxes are trending just slightly better than we had planned. I don't have any reason to think that that would change in the near future, but we are watching those on a regular basis. Sploß Projects, the custom pumper vehicle for fire has been pushed to spring of two thousand twenty five. Fire equipment has been received. This paving is for our FY twenty five paving contract to start in the spring. And we have available funds for water and sewer infrastructure from Sploß should that be needed. And the Sploß projects were amended to include the courthouse fire pump, which materials are being constructed for that job. The Axe Building Electrical is in process and the law enforcement vehicles are going through procurement at this time. T-SPOST projects included paving, which will start in the spring, and related services which are ongoing all year. And also amended to include the Hog Mountain Construction and the Column Ferry Patching and Widening. On the Column Ferry Patching and Widening, that was also shared with the general fund. That is how we are using the LRA grant funds that were received in prior year. And in first quarter, I like to give you a list of all of the multi-year projects that are still ongoing that were approved in prior years. So what you have listed are things that were not complete at the end of fiscal year twenty four and have rolled forward into the current fiscal year. And the amounts listed here are the amounts that are contract balances as of July first. So since July first, we've had several of these projects complete, including E nine one one's HVAC monitoring, firefighting equipment, courthouse elevator upgrades, FY twenty four Elmeg paving, and the SR fifteen roundabout. That one actually shows complete on prior year and this year. The road is complete and you can drive around the roundabout, but we haven't completed final retainedage payout due to that being a G dot construction project. And the other projects are still in process. And finally, our enterprise fund water resources, revenue collections of five point seven million, which is thirty nine point six one collected. And when I look at water and sewer sales, they are right on target with our budget. But water resources has one-time fees that can be substantial. So when I look at their capacity and connection fees for just the first quarter, they're already at one hundred and nineteen and one hundred and seventy one percent to budget. When I look back into the second quarter, they're still continuing to increase. So that's substantially driving up their percentage collective revenue to budget. Their water availability and installation fees are at sixty nine percent and one hundred and one percent. So those collections are strong. And what we do with those is we create reserve funds so that they're budgeted to pull these funds into reserves. And those reserves are used for future improvements to infrastructure or expansion of infrastructure. So while those are likely going over budget for the year, they won't necessarily be used towards the budgeted operation. uh, they won't necessarily be used towards the budgeted operations in the fund. And their expenses are at three point six million, right at eighteen percent expended. And this one particular fund contains all of their costs unlike our other governmental funds. So I like to show you their expenses by category. Operations would include personnel, purchase services and supplies, um, at all right around a twenty percent average. Their capital at eleven point seven six percent, which we'll look at a little bit closer. Their depreciation is budgeted, but only occurs at the end of the fiscal year. Um, and their debt service is being paid out as scheduled, so they're at thirty-eight percent to budget. Right, and these are their budgeted projects. And currently in process, we have the Cause Creek, uh, engineering for phase two and for phase three. The Epps Bridge lift station expansion and the Daniels Bridge lift station expansion. Um, while these other, um, easements and engineerings are still pending, we do have a budget for equipment that is, uh, not been used at this time, but we do have their two vehicles budgeted, uh, that have been received during the first quarter. And they also have multi-year projects to update you on. The Cause Creek construction for phase two, uh, as well as engineering rolled forward from prior year. Uh, these are the balances remaining at that time and are still in process. Along with the Bear Creek, uh, water treatment design, the balance as of the first of July and then the amendment that was approved since then. So that's all I have to present, uh, to you this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Anyone have any questions for Melissa? Thank you very much. Does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent? Oh. Let's do that one first. Let's do a discuss and consider the new alcohol license for Catch twenty-two garage effective January one, twenty twenty.
I'll be glad to take that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. And this may be irrelevant since the, uh, ordinance was just amended. Or this will be the last time you'll probably hear from me on these. Catch twenty-two garage has made application for a new alcohol license for retail consumption on premises of beer, wine and distilled spirits. The registered agent, Mr. Richard Miley, has completed his rest training. They are purchasing the current Dicky's location at twenty-one thirty-one Hog Mountain Road. So this would be a second location for Catch twenty-two. The application is complete aside from the closing documents of the purchase and the business license in the new owner's name once that transaction took place. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Holly? Do we have any public comment on this item? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve new alcohol license for Catch twenty-two garage effective January one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now, does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Here now we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve the nine consent items that are submitted.
Second.
We have a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. We have no need of, of executive session, so Commissioner Sax.
Motion adjourned.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned.